Okay, before we begin tonight's Board of Education meeting, I wanted to make note of the passing of a member of the O'neana City School District family, Mrs. Irma We Met, beloved substitute in our district for many, many years, passed away this week. Mrs. We Met touched the lives of many students and staff, and I wanted to just take this moment to recognize her contributions and her, you know, our gratitude for having had her in the lives of this school district. And we will call to order the Board of Education meeting for February 24th, 2021. Roll call. Okay, you have to say the part of the line, gentlemen, so sorry.
.................................
Sorry, sorry. Traffic was bad. All the way down the ester.
Okay, we'll go with roll call. Here.
Here.
Yeah. Here.
Resolve to accept the agenda as presented. Resolve to accept the minutes. Oh, yes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The opposition?
My client just reminded me if you want to do the Q and A.
Thank you, okay. I want to remind you before we move any further, if you are watching via Zoom and would like to make a comment, you can type it into our Q and A. It'll be read at one of our two opportunities to address the board. You'll find that on the bottom portion of your Zoom screen. Now we'll move on to now I resolve to approve the minutes from the February 10th to 2021 meeting.
That's a special meeting or the regular meeting?
That was the regular meeting.
So.
Sean seconded back. I need an all in favor?
Aye.
Sue, did you say something?
I said second.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, sorry. Okay, so that that motion is passed. We have now arrived at the first opportunity to address the board.
We do not.
Okay, again, there'll be a second opportunity later in the meeting. If you have something to write, you can put that into the question and answer section on Zoom like.
I do believe that there's another, does this mean we have two second minutes?
Okay.
Is one of them supposed to be the special meeting?
One is the special meeting, okay. Thank you, okay, so resolve to accept the meetings of the special meeting as presented on February 5th, 2021. All in favor?
Aye. I need to stay in those.
I believe we still yeah, we, I think we have some forms of papers, so. So that is moved as well, so before we move on from communications, we do have a comment.
Yes, this is from Scott Hoover, and it says, what steps has the board been taking to open schools to the students?
Okay, thank you. I think we can talk a little bit about that later on. Make some comments, okay. Personnel, resolve that the reading of the Teaching and Administrative Personnel Memorandum 2021-04 be waived and that the action items stated February 24th, 2021 be approved as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
So.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Resolve that the reading of the Non-Certified Personnel Memorandum Number 2021-02 be waived and that the action items stated February 24th, 2021 be approved as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is moved. Now we are moving on to the Superintendent's report.
Yeah, Mr. Brantwood, we just have two action items that we
Okay. Resolve that the Board of Education hereby appoints the following persons to serve in the capacity of Registration Board/Pole Inspectors for the May 18th, 2021 Budget Vote and Election. Site of the vote is the Foothills 24 Market Street from noon to 9:00 p.m. Appointees are Charlotte, Georgia, Linda, Delara, Rebecca Vanderwerker, Charlotte, Santamont, and Sarah Crowe.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
The opposition? Okay, so moved. That's, that motion is passed. And the next is resolve that the Board of Education designates Tuesday, May 4th, 2021 from 8:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. as voter registration day. This site for registration is at 31 Central Street, O'neana, New York.
So.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, that is also passed.
Okay, in terms of capital projects, no real noteworthy updates relative to the project. Still moving along with punch list items. There were several trades that are in our district this week tying up some loose ends, but that all continues at this time. To, if you don't mind me, I respond up to the center. We as a school district and this Board of Education continue to look for ways to return more kids to our classrooms. I think that we are seeing some positive trends in that regard. Our conversations with the Department of Health continue, you know, as they have since last March. Still communicating, reaching out, exploring opportunities, speaking to our conducting an audit again of classroom size and space. We'll be reaching out to parents at some point with information to help us with some decision making. Again, I am constantly being reminded that we are continuing to be in a pandemic, which I'm very well aware of, but we still need to advocate for our kids and look for opportunities and ways to return more of them to in-person instruction. This has been a goal of ours since last March. I feel much better about that opportunity than I did months ago. You know, our conversations are changing, especially in light of the fact that, you know, vaccinations are taking place. All being a little slower than we want, but a good percentage of our folks in the district have been fortunate enough to receive their vaccination. So I think there are some very positive steps being taken. I was thrilled with the fact that we were given a green light, so to speak, to at least return athletics. I think that was a great step because I'm hopeful that maybe that opens additional doors. And I kind of think that it is. So we are still, our noses to the grindstone, and we're hoping that our goal is to have as many kids in school by the end of this year as possible. And that has been our goal all along, and we're continuing to make strides in that direction. And hopefully, you know, in the next few weeks, we'll be able to, it's hoping that the infection rate in our community remains low. I'm fairly confident that we'll be able to bring more kids back into our classrooms. So, you know, I mean, we all want the same thing, you know, kids belong in our schools, and and I, and I think we're moving in that direction. So more to come, we still have a lot of fact finding to do. We still have, you know, a lot of attention needs to be paid to, you know, the organizations that we rely on to help us, you know, sort through some of these things. But right now, I'm very optimistic that we're heading in the right direction. So more to come.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate that everyone here in this room tonight, and I know our parents and our admin staff and faculty across all buildings, it's a thought, getting our students back is our number one priority, and it's something we talk about and think about every single day. So, you know, just as, you know, we want to see everyone back as much as everyone else and know that we are looking under every rock for those opportunities.
Absolutely.
So, thank you. We will now move on to the Director of Curriculum Instruction Board.
All right, so, okay, so I just think you're, okay, so thank you. And then went quick the last time I reported to you, so just a couple little things to share out. First day of second semester was February 1st, as most of you know. So we're into the second half of the school year, which is, you know, unbelievable, but also exciting. Just a little bit of an update, I talked to our February 10th Curriculum Work Day. That was a big success, K-12, the teachers met. They did an excellent job working through their priority standards and planning for the remainder of the year. They submitted plans to their building principals, and those are ongoing documents that they keep going back and editing and looking at. And just to let you know, this work is leading into our curriculum work that's going to continue hopefully in June and throughout the summer to plan. And, you know, with our goal being to create those curriculum maps and pacing guides, K-12 for all that we need to have during the district. I attended a regional conversation today about teaching and learning, and it was led by Dr. Katie Cooper, the Bosie Superintendent. And the reason why I bring that up is because it talked a lot about how important curriculum is and how, how much during this COVID time, like what do we know about curriculum during COVID? Where teachers, you know, they're really doing a great job using their curriculum. They now are really knowing the importance of looking at those priority standards and and using those, and so some of the things that we're asked today, maybe really, like, we are in a pandemic, but what will we carry forward with us? We're in an opportunity now to really kind of look at all the great things that have happened, all the learning that had to happen in such a short period of time for teachers and the changes and lots of things that we've done differently. So what we'll be thinking about is what we will carry forward, and then also what will we leave behind? And you know what I'm saying, we know some things that are going to be behind. And so what are some of those action steps? Those are things that we're going to be thinking about as an agentee and the teachers. What are we going to do, you know? And one of the things that stood out to me today was maybe I could do a better job communicating with parents about what actually curriculum is and what every level should be learning, and what are those power standards at every level? So if you're a parent, you can just click on it and say, oh, this is what my first grad is supposed to be learning right now, or things like that. So that's a goal down the road, but just thought I would share that with you. The K through A E L A and math benchmark assessments are taking place as we speak, and the teachers are going to be provided a training at March 10th on how to utilize the data from those assessments. So those are underway, and with us began with remote students and in-person students to, to assess those, those students to see how we can best differentiate their instruction and teach them using that data. Do-Ed Tech, I talked to you about that before, it's our conference day on March 17th. You probably got the email, it's on, and I just want to make sure that you get a formal invitation, the Board of Education members, if you would like to register and join in the fun that day, please do so, but you do need to register, and the deadline is March 5th. And I, and the email that I sent are the directions on how to do that. So go ahead and register, and if you need help or can't figure it out, just send me an email to everybody, and we'll, we'll help you out with that.
Honey, you can resend it for the
I will, I sent it, yep, I will resend, I'll give it to Reggie and Heather, send it to everybody. And so, you know, it's getting closer, and we're really excited, and we're looking at this, like, the theme this year is empowering all learners. Calm, connected, and compassionate. So we really feel like that's perfect for this year, and Bonnie and I kind of added another little part to that where it's kind of together apart, because it'll be one of the first times in a long time that our district is all kind of in their classrooms. Unfortunately, they'll have to be in their own workspaces, but here, hopefully, there'll be a nice buzz in the air. They'll be, they'll be participating virtually, this is a 100% virtual conference, but we're hoping to make it a little exciting and provide some, some good swag for the teachers that come that day, some little treats and things like that, so it'll be nice that they're all here on a Wednesday participating in that conference day. So if you have any questions about that, let me know. And one last exciting thing I just wanted to share with all of you is, you know, not that it's really a lot of curriculum, but we did open up quite a few more clubs second semester. And so at the middle school, we now have a total of 10 clubs up and running, and at the high school, we have a total of 21 clubs up and running. And I want to say thank you to all the club advisors that have stepped up and said, yes, please, let's get these clubs going, let's get the kids in, even if it looks different than it would in the normal year. And the club advisors are going to be submitting their quarterly reports to my office, and we're going to be presenting to you at the end of the year on how all that went. So that's all I have for tonight, and unless you have any questions.
Are the clubs meeting in person?
They are doing a little bit of both. If they can meet in person safely, just like we would a regular class, they are doing that. Some of them at lunchtime split them after school, but they're also inviting those remote students in through Zoom. So if they can't meet safely in a room where they're socially distanced with all of our rules, then they do a Zoom meeting, but if they can, they are trying to get the kids in person.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to Business Manager's Report. Resolve that the reading of the Financial Memorandum 2021-03 dated February 24th, 2021 be waived and that the financial action items be approved as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. Discussion?
I'm going to vote for the memorandum at the end of them. So the first item is our internal controls audit. That is, it's one of the unconded mandates that we have to do. They look over the internal controls. We, we got a buy last year because of COVID, so we really need to get that done this year, and that's just an update. A lot of interviews, our procedures and controls and stuff like that. That's going to start next week. We've already started sending information. And then, just so you know, we have to do it in our school, and you may not care about it in other schools because you only have to do it if you have 1,500 students or more. So most of the schools around us don't have to do that audit. The repair reserve is just a small adjustment. All of the repair reserve items are complete, and we spent, you may recall, we had about 750,000 in the reserve. We turned some of it into a project, which is also on here. And, but we spent about $294,000, and that was the removal of the underground storage tanks at the high school, and then just closing the tank at Center Street, Center Street parking lot, roof work that really desperately needed to be done at Center Street. And we saved a lot of money on that, actually, we had a little bit priced on that one. So we didn't spend, you know, all the money we thought that we would. So this is just the final adjustment. That also includes the scoreboards here, concession stand work, so there was a lot of work done for that amount. And it was not payable for the work part, that's why we did it. C-Biz is just our annual fixed asset update evaluation. The Smith group is cooperative purchasing group that we are hoping to use for our voter group capital project. And that way, we get it, it'll be done a lot faster, you know, before the bidding process. We really did kind of get to say we don't want these, you know, groups working in our district, so we had a little bit of a say in that. And just so you know, we are, our purchasing policy already allows for us to use cooperative purchasing networks. So this is really just a formality to let me know that we will be And then on the addendum, we have some surplus light fixtures. There's a budget amendment, and that is, apparently, we've been waiting for a very long time for this to fall screen for the pool registration system, and it is necessary for the proper functioning of our pool. And the third item on there is the Smith site development, which we're hoping that you approve the award of this. And that is the capital project that we voted on, it was about 681,000. We did have to pull Riverside out of there because they were over their max cost allowance, so we have to wait for them to reset. But this will allow us to do, the biggest part of this is going to be caving at the bus garage, which is awful down there. It's needed it for a long time, and the doors are also bad down there, so we'll be replacing doors. We'll do the underground storage tank removal at Valley View in Greater Plains, some vestibule work at Valley View to extend that, and then some doors that are needed in the building. So this amount will cover all of that. So it was originally a repair reserve, but then it turned to a project where we could get aid on these pieces of that work.
Okay, so we'll vote on the original financial memorandum. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Okay, that was, that's carried, and we will now resolve to approve the 2021-03 Financial Memorandum Addendum as presented, that we've already covered. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Okay, that is also carried. And now we'll move on to budget.
Yeah, I just want to let you know wherever we are with the budget, everybody, I have most of the requests, and people have been really, really good about not requesting things that they don't really need. Right now, we're about $750,000 over the tax cap, and that's using a million dollars. We're not, our budget isn't actually up that much, but, you know, we're really highly dependent on what state aid we're going to get. Right now, we don't know what that's going to be. So really, we can't, we can't really finalize anything until we have a better idea of what that number is. But right now, as far as the process goes, we're moving right along. And, you know, we do have a lot of the information in already, there's still a lot of information to gather. I know technology has changed so much this year that that's been, you know, it's a lot of information to gather forward with that, so, but we're, we're on hold, and we should be in good shape as far as the process goes. Let's see, what I did want to point out to you, I just, I handed you two papers. One of those papers is the executive proposal, so that's the governor's proposal. And we already looked at this, but one thing that I do want to point out here, and the other paper is related to this, is you see on there, it says star payment, and at first, you know, we couldn't figure out why it's not on there, you know, and I thought, well, we'll just ignore it, it's not really a state aid, it's a benefit, a personal benefit to homeowners. And, you know, so it's an exemption on the tax bill, as most of you know, because you probably get it. And then they, you send the tax bills out with the exemption, and then the state pays us on behalf of you and me for, for your tax, whatever you owe for taxes. Well, it's in here now because I think it, he's starting to do away with the program, and it's, it's very deceptive because it looks like on here that it's a state aid to school districts, and it's not. But they'll use it to take money away from schools. So I do want to point that out, so if you get the credit, which after 2016, a lot of us get the credit rather than the exemption on your tax bill, that might just go away. And that only affects you, but if you have the exemption on your tax bill, that's going to affect the school, and it shouldn't, because that's an individual taxpayer benefit that he's tying now to state aid to the school, and it's not. It's very, very deceiving and sneaky and not nice. So hopefully, that won't apply. But the other thing that I want to point out there is, this won't be a problem for next year because you'll see the local district funding adjustment, and that's a state aid deduct. So that is taking that away from the state aid that is due to us, and you'll see right underneath that the Code 19 Supplemental Stimulus, so that's the new CARES package, which is a lot bigger than the old CARES package, but you also know that it's the same exact amount as what they're taking away from us in state aid. So what, what they do there is, you know, we'll have to apply for the grant, and I know that, you know, they're telling you all it's for technology, it's for this, it's for that. Just to be clear, that is not extra money. That's money that came from the federal government that the state is using to backfill. So what we're going to have to do is kind of backtrack and say, okay, what's in our budget that will fit these bad minds? Because that's, that's our state aid. So it's not additional funding, even though it's four times as much. You can see the deduct and the exact same amount of the stimulus package. So just if you hear that up there, it's not extra money to the school. It's just coming from a different source, it's coming from federal instead of state. So those are the only things that I did want to point out to you as far as the budget goes, but we, we are on a roll. We'll keep looking light at it.
Okay, so we've reached the second opportunity to address the board.
Okay, we have a couple more. The first one is from A. Jones. It says, the CDC has given its best guidance. How and when can the O'neana City School District move forward? What are the obstacles in your way to opening in-person learning? What are the plans for overcoming needs? How does O'neana City School District plan to layer mitigation strategies so we can get the students back to school? Want me to pick anyone?
Yes, please.
And this other, the last one that I see here is from Laurel Elder, and it says, can the board offer some more specifics about the metrics and decision-making process being used to determine that returning to a to in-person school five days a week? Also, can O'neana Elementary School start using Wednesdays for in-person instruction? Thank you. And now there's one more. From Scott Hoover. Reframing my prior question. The CDC, the New York State Department of Health, and Department of Ed all require mitigating steps to open schools. Mask wearing, sanitizing, ventilation, and social distancing are primary. The problem of social distancing, I have been told, is the main reason students are not back at school. But hasn't the school met the other criteria, including vaccinations to a high enough standard that social distancing can be more flexible? Particularly since transmission rates have dropped significantly. All those agencies include language
All those agencies include language such as "to the greatest extent" and "whenever possible" when considering social distancing in context with other mitigating standards that have been met or exceeded.
Thank you. And you have, you, this is all Pepsis on record. So, just to reiterate these opportunities to communicate, we will, you know, we, we're constantly looking at these things, and we're taking in your information. And it is important, you know, we do want to hear from you, we appreciate hearing from you. And we, you know, we are working, like I said, we, there's not a person that's not thinking about this most of the day.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we all eat, live, and breathe all of this information. We've been receiving this information since last January on this illness. The unfortunate reality is a lot of the information that we get is, is contradicts each other. So, yeah, the physical distancing still seems to be a bit of a controversial issue. I know that there are, there is some lobbying taking place to get that six feet reduced to three. This has been the topic of conversations at our bosom superintendent meetings, our meetings with Heidi Bond at the, at the county department of health. These are all of, all of those things. Yes, this district has gone to great lengths to put all, all of those mitigating strategies in place. The physical distancing, you know, still presents a lot of issues. Not only in the classroom, but the logistics to feed our students on a large scale, our opportunity to transport on a large scale. These are all things that we've never stopped looking at. These are things that we've been looking at since, since before the start of this school year. To go back to my previous statement, I think we're starting to see some movement in this direction now, which is positive. So, we continue to monitor it daily. We continue to meet with Heidi Bond on a weekly basis. We continue to meet as a group of superintendents twice a week. I continue to reach out to superintendents from larger school districts elsewhere around the state to see if they have any novel ideas that, you know, we could employ here. The unfortunate reality is, there aren't. But I, I real, optimistically, I feel like we're gonna get there. We're, we're not there yet, but we're getting pretty close. And those conversations will continue. And once, once we, you know, once we can take all of this information that we're constantly getting all of the time and, you know, put together a, a plan that we can bring more kids back safely, we are gonna, we're gonna do it as soon as we can. And because that's what we all want. And, you know, the things that drive us crazy, you know, and, and I'm thrilled with this. I, I love the fact that we have students back in school participating in athletics. You know, but it is still mind-numbing to a degree that, you know, we could have kids participate in athletics, but yet, you know, just as what we talked about last meeting. In our instrumental music and vocal music, those kids still have to remain twelve feet from each other. And, you know, all the stipulations relative to, you know, feeding our students without masks on. There's a lot to this. And, and every day, I do as much reading as I can because we're just looking for the one opportunity that we might be able to employ here. And again, you know, relative to physical distancing, there's a lot of misinformation out there. Is it required? Is it not required? We're being told that it is. And, and we are working toward a, trying to get a universal decision on this whole thing. Because the last thing we want to do is put our students, put the adults that work with students, in a position that's not safe. So, we are working on it. And, you know, again, this district, whether it be, you know, cleaning and sanitizing or, you know, working with our transportation partners and our food service contractors. And the work that's being done in the classrooms, you know, that is all phenomenal work. And, you know, every, everyone involved, all those stakeholders, including our parents and our students. We want nothing more than to have these buildings filled with kids. We're in the kid business. And as soon as we can do so in a manner that is safe, we're gonna, we're gonna do it. One of the things that I'm excited about is the fact that although we live where we live, at some point, the weather will change, we'll be able to get these windows open to promote even more airflow. As I've mentioned before, our ventilation system, we have it programmed to circulate air with, with the maximum occupancy levels in our buildings. So, we're turning over a lot of air, even though we're operating at fifty percent with our students, or even a little less with our higher. So, all of those things have been put in place, you know, in compliance with the CDC guidance and the State Department of Health guidance. It really is the sticking point right now is the physical distancing. And I start, I, I happen to think we're starting to see a little flexibility improvement in there. And, you know, once, once we really kind of narrow that down, I don't know if there's an impediment to keep us from coming back. So, that's exciting to me, as I'm sure it is to all of you, as I'm sure it will be to our parents and our students and their teachers. So, more to come. We are working toward it, and optimistically, I think it's gonna happen, so.
And I just, from a sports standpoint, I will say, we, we all have counterparts, other board members we know in other districts. We're aware that other schools are also figuring out how to return students safely. Bill is not here tonight, sits on a president's forum with other presidents of school boards. I, I, you know, we are paying attention to whatever, what else is planning and trying to make happen as well. But there's over seven hundred schools, districts in the state of New York. And every school has different capacity, different budgets, different, many, many factors that go into that. So, no one answer is the right solution for this, for a lot of schools.
No, no, you're right. And, you know, it is, it is, it's somewhat problematic being in this region of New York because we, we are a larger school, you know, surrounded by much smaller schools. So, you know, schools that have class sizes above ten, those, those students could be back in their classes, many of which are, are, you know, average square footage. And some of these schools are between eight hundred and a thousand square feet per classroom. So, they can have those kids in full capacity without employing any physical distancing strategies because there's so much room they can spread out. The unfortunate reality is we're, we're, we're not there. You know, and I've said it many, many times, on average, our classrooms are seven hundred thirty square feet. Many, many of our classrooms are twenty-two to twenty-six students. So, as, as you can tell, you know, until we get guidance that kids can be closer, we're a hundred percent mask-wearing district anyway. One of the frustrations that I have is, you know, we've been so good about adhering to all of those safety precautions. And yet, you know, if there is a positive, all of our students in that particular class are being quarantined. So, I always question then, why, why do we have that number? If we're adhering to it, and yet, when there is someone who's symptomatic or there's someone who's positive, everyone gets quarantined anyway. You know, so whether, whether someone's six feet or twenty-six feet, right now, to me, it doesn't seem like that, that makes much difference because everyone's being quarantined. But when, when we come back in, in a larger capacity, the only concern is, and maybe it's not a concern, but we will still have symptomatic students, and we will still have positives. So, instead of a cohort being quarantined, now, of course, it's going to be a much larger group. So, you know, these are all the things, I, you know, I get it. I'm also, you know, a parent of three kids who graduated from here. It's frustrating on many, many levels, but I really, I, I think we're gonna see it before the end of the school year. I really do, so.
Thank you, thank you.
And Tom, I just wanted to mention too, I think we're getting overlooked a lot of times because it's not just our kids in classrooms, sitting down in a classroom and not moving around. It's the passing times when we have all eight bird of our kids in the hallway all at once. To me, that is the dangerous situation when you, you have cram, packed hallways and movement. And, and those are the types of times when infection's gonna happen. But infection's not necessarily gonna happen in a classroom, and everybody's sitting, sitting, socially distancing, and keeping their distance and, and doing all of the necessary things. It's, it's the passing times, it's the congregations, it's the, it's the mass numbers, you know, in, in passing times. In congregations in the morning, and then after school, when everybody, you know, kind of gets together to funnel out the doors. I mean, those are all times when transmission, transmission rates increase. So, I mean, a lot of people think about sitting down in the classroom. I necessarily don't think that the classroom is the issue. It's gonna be the passing times, and when everybody's funneled into small areas of, of space and moved. And another issue is colleges are experiencing issues now too. Part of colleges opened back up, and they have some positive cases now. They've shut down, gone back to virtuals, bar owners. They're having issues, and they have fewer kids in the week than we do. And they have twelve buildings, we have one building. So, I mean, there, there are, there are going to be issues. And, and I know colleges are different because kids are doing different things outside, but there are going to be positives. And my daughter goes to Vinton, and they're back in person, and they have positive cases, and they're going back first. So, there are schools, colleges, that are trying to move more towards in-person construction, but they are hitting some roadblocks. We, we have to be able to expect those roadblocks, but.
And, and you're right there. And, you know, as a district, you know, if you come into our schools, you know, especially up here in the high school, you, you see our, you know, you, you see our, you know, our, our lane tape, so to speak, so we can, you know, keep kids separated and, and, you know, one-direction travel. Our students do not use their lockers right now because that would be problematic and more time spent in the hallway. Of course, when we bring more students back, that will increase as well. But, you know, if, if you spend any time in this building, you see how good our kids are. You know, they go from one classroom to the other, there's not a lot of dilly-dallying. We're very fortunate, our, our students do a wonderful job. And like, like we can bring more of them back, we are gonna do it. But Darren, you're right, there will be, there will be issues. And, you know, just like we have since last March, you know, we'll address them as they come in to the best of our ability. But again, I, I will say that I feel much more optimistic about that return now than I did, really, just a, really, just a few weeks ago, actually, so.
Are you familiar with the global enrichment bill or R. W. I.?
I'm, I'm very familiar. Carl Momente at Public School Richmond Bill, and I speak quite frequently. I reached out to all of these schools to say, "Are you still adhering to the six-foot separation?" Because I'm hearing things like, you know, we don't. So, you know, my research thus far has been that they are. There, there are a couple of schools that are going to bring more kids back. And we had this conversation just the other day where, you know, some schools, when kids are sitting down, they're allowed to remove their masks. And one of the concerns that was at the forefront of our discussion yesterday was that if you do bring more students back, it, it would be strongly recommended that that practice doesn't continue. If you're gonna have kids less than six feet from each other, whatever school that is, that school needs to, if they're not already, be a one-hundred percent mask-wearing district. So, yeah, I spend a lot of time working the phones and talking to other schools, trying to find schools that are in similar circumstances to us size-wise.
But that goes to the point that just because we may be similar in size, there are other mitigating factors that make something that's working for another school maybe not work for us, or maybe we have to, it's a hurdle we have to get past. So, I think this discussion has been really good to show that, you know, we're working on it, and we haven't found a solution.
If I might add, because we have different circumstances, things that are working for us don't necessarily work for other buildings, other districts as well. You know, these conversations are, you know, two-directional. A lot of people reach out to us as well, so.
Good, good, all right. Well, thank you for indulging us with that. We'll move on to roundtable, and I will start with Sue.
Um, I don't really have a schedule, committee report. I've been taking some notes on what I wanted to say. And then, Colleen, when you were speaking, one of the things that I wanted to point out was that, specifically in this agenda, that we have, we approved some more provision club and more appointments. And then you brought it up, is that the number of things that we've been able to bring back, even though we are still in a hybrid model, we're slowly bringing those things back. And, and I think that, in my opinion, is that we're moving in the right direction. And I, I, I feel like, I feel that, what we've said is that our goal for all of us is that to have all the kids back in person. I don't care if it's seniors, something I want more, that for my senior to experience is senior fear, which is half over. So, just to know that we are, it is, we live every day, whether it's at home for me or it's at my job. It's, it's something that we're moving at home. That's all I have, thank you.
You know, what, well, Sue said, I have a, I have a senior as well. And I'd like, you know, for every, every bit of me who would like to see your, your back in class, experience the rest of the senior year. But it has to be safe. A good metaphor for this is like just turning the light switches back. And you can't just turn the light switches back, and you have to make sure all the connections are, you gotta check all the connections. You gotta make sure, gotta make sure every, every part is gonna work before you turn the light switch back on. Because if something shorts out and we're gonna have a fire, and, you know, you know, bad things can happen. So, just making sure that all of the connections are made, that everything's gonna work properly, that we're, we're, we're counting for all different variables. And even, even doing that, I think that we're still gonna run this situation. So, I hope sooner or later, we're gonna get back to in, in school one-hundred percent, one-hundred percent of the time, hopefully. I'm optimistic too. Colleen, thanks for sharing all the great information with us. It's great to hear from you. Thanks for the invite to the conference that they had on March fifth. And also, I'd like to just mention the passing of Irma. We met, she was a teacher in this district. I taught with Irma when I was at Unitito. I actually happen to be distantly related to Irma as well. She's married to my mother's cousin, which makes Irma the first cousin once remarried, I believe.
How's that?
But I'd just like to mention, thank, thank you to Irma. That's all I have. I'll just say, many steps towards normalcy is a good step. And here in thirty-one, folks, up here operating is a good line of stuff in the right direction. You know, appreciate curriculum work that we're doing. You know, I, I think, well said, you know, we want our kids back to school. And I think talking about it continuously, more overtly, is, is good. Appreciate the questions. We don't want people to not know what's going on. You know, the guarantee, are we ever gonna have zero risk? No. So, the question is, what level of risk is acceptable within the framework of the current reality? You know, I got a car in broke here tonight, that was a risk, I took it. You know, so where is that relative to, you know, we got all the teachers, I assume largely anyway, and I vaccinated for a great, huge step in the right direction. And we all know the kids are not very susceptible to it anyway. So, I, you know, I'm looking forward to the further discussions, the things we have to really consider and get to the point where we feel like it's the right thing to do because it's the thing we want to do. We all are in agreement on that. We all are in agreement on that. Finance met yesterday, and the financial support covers the majority of those. We did talk about the health insurance discussion and the other option that we have, and we didn't come to an agreement on that yet. Looking for more specifics, I guess, on whatever differences those might be because the financial differences are considerable. And we already talked about where we are in the budget process. Certainly some unknowns there still. We have a million in our unbalanced in the budget, or another 750 were above the cap. They're about. Like to get a couple variables known, so we know where we're at. This is the governor's budget at this point that we're basing aid on directly. Yeah, so oftentimes, you know, the legislature meets in the middle of some place, and then we have the federal aid, obviously, which is the big wild card this year. March is next, we still have time, but March is next week. So, you know, be fast and furious as it usually is as we get towards April. See, I only talked about the star show game here, I guess, which... Oh, I have a question too. We can avoid the internal control audit, at least, if we're under 15 students. How many do we have now? Right, so now?
We are, but we're not there yet, we're close.
15 or more.
Coming around now a little.
I don't think they let you do that.
All right, I happened to think of that when you were talking, that we actually might have, you know, lots to do because of, you know, kids at home and the expansion of the Atigo Christmas people. That's all I have, nice.
Thank you. Tom?
Oh, good, yeah, probably. Tom, thank you for your instructions, but first of all, looking forward to that meeting on the 17th. I should go with that, that's the people. I probably wouldn't be moving unless I know.
It's a fun thing to do on St. Patrick's Day.
Yeah, St. Patrick's Day wasn't my day. Anyways, thank you, Tom, I appreciate that. And Irma, and comments you all made about Irma, I've never met the lady. I know last night you were speaking about it, the college didn't eat, made a comment to me. So obviously, someone who's been removed from school for over four years got a lot of good things to say about the lady, and it just goes to show you that students don't forget. So my heartfelt gratitude to her family. Sue made a great point with the clubs. Last night, or last weekend, I got the board docs, I'm looking through it, and we see, I see an area which is filled with mates. And it was nice to finally see that, that we had these teachers there going back to what they used to be doing, being the club advisors. And it was, it put a smile on my face. But I mean, again, we have our sports in a baby step moving forward, and then we're putting the gloves there. It sounded right, I think we are, no questions, going in the right direction. So unfortunately, the word patience has to come into play, and not only patience, but essence of safety too. So we're trying, trust me, we are trying. So it was nice to see that these teachers are doing the online as well as they did in the classroom. It's just, it just means how much they are trying to do the right thing and be hardworking students used to have last year, a year and a half ago. So it is nice to see that, so thank you, teachers. I just heard the whistle in the sport, so it is nice to still hear it. I heard that, so, you know, again, I mean, I understand everybody's questions and how they're making it, trust me, they're great questions. But Mr. Bradley, by all means, answer them to the best of our ability right now. And the other thing we also gotta keep in mind too is, you know, everybody wants to compare us to other school districts, and keep in mind, we're dealing with, just the conversation we had tonight, Richmondville, Normwich, L'Onianna, we're talking three different counties and three different health departments who have three different policies. So, you know, Heidi is doing what she can, what she has in front of her now. I understand things come down from the CDC, but if these other schools are doing something, bending the rule a little bit, I'd be cautious, that's all I got to say. But I think what we're doing here in our school district is safety first, priority first. And what Heidi's given us for a correction, we are adhering to it. And trust me, you put it in front of us, and if it is something we can do, we will do it, as long as it's safe for everyone. Thank you, Tom, I appreciate everything you're doing, and that's very, uh, but, Sue, I really appreciate that you worked hard on that. We'll get there. And look, man.
Thank you, Sean. We did acknowledge Irma's passing at the beginning of the meeting. And I will also say, both my children were very, very saddened by that news. So she definitely left her mark, not only with her colleagues here, but a lot of students.
She sure did, she was a special person. And in her capacity as a substitute, as you can tell, she touched many lives, you know, including my own children. And she definitely left her mark on our district. She's up here at least for the last 15 years. And on several occasions, she came in when we really needed someone for a long-term substitute. And she was, she was just a great person, so.
And I will point out, I thought of it as we, I really never did the math before, but all seven board members have children who've gone to L'Onianna City School District, and six of us still have students in the L'Onianna City School District. So if you don't think that there's parents working to get our kids back in school, I don't know who you would want on the board besides seven other parents of L'Onianna City School District children. And with that, I will resolve to adjourn to executive session for purposes of special ed and personnel. We adjourned.